I call this meeting to order for Tuesday, April the 8th, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Crystal Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Warren Robinson.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Reden.
Here.
Commissioner Mark Tapley.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Rachel. We're gonna start with our invocation given by Pastor Louis Olivas from Christ Community Church, and followed by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Robinson.
Would you guys please bow your head and join me in prayer. Our Father and our God, as we come together this afternoon, Lord, let us pause to acknowledge the significance of our gathering and the responsibilities entrusted to us by you. Remind us, Lord, that we are joined in a shared commitment to serve our community with dedication, integrity, and compassion. Help us to come together in unity and be guided with purpose and collaboration as we talk on matters that affect the lives of those in our city, including our military. Help us to open our hearts and our minds to different perspectives. Recognizing that our diversity is a strength that enriches our collective vision. Help us in our decision-making process and give us the wisdom to make choices that prioritize the common good, equality, and well-being of our residents. Let our actions reflect our dedication to justice, fairness, and the enduring commitment to our city we so love. As we engage in discussions, let us do so with mutual respect. May we listen intently to one another, valuing each other's voice, and considering thoughtfully the insights brought into this space. Let us not forget those in our community who may be facing hardship and challenges. May your work today and always be guided by your empathy, striving to uplift each other and support each other, ensuring that no one is left behind. Help us strive to create a city that exemplifies hope, opportunity, and progress to all. And we ask you, Lord, that you just be with us tonight, God, as we just discuss the things that matter to all the people here and to all of our representatives. Lord, we thank you, Father, for this time. We praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. We are gonna move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion for Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson. Can we put up the vote, please? And motion passes seven zero. Okay, I have... Yeah, I've got two presentations tonight. I'm gonna do the first one, I think... Boy, I don't know, we have a packed room. I'll just go this way. All right, I'm excited about this. Come on up, guys. How are you? Two of my favorite people. You have my favorite military people right there. Come on up here. This is Colonel John Etheridge. He is the commander of Holloman Air Force Base. Chief Ford is the command chief of Holloman Air Force Base. And I'm gonna let you introduce our family tonight. Let me just tell you first, this month is Month of the Military Child. As you can see, we're wearing purple in honor of that. And Colonel Etheridge is gonna introduce our military family.
Thank you, Susan. So here with us today, we've got the Julio family, one of our in-QI United States trucker pilots here at Holloman Air Force Base, all with their four kids. So we are so grateful as a community from the base for the support we get from the city of Alamogordo, recognizing, you know, the contributions that we have and the support that we get from you all. Especially for our children, as we integrate into your community, the support that you give us, you know, we all have our children and our future. But with the military, a traditional stress and strain as we move around, so we're exceptionally grateful for the support that we get here for our military members, but especially for our children. So I just say thank you.
Thank you. So we're excited about that. If you wanna come up here... Yeah. Well, I'm gonna have you guys over here, and then I'll get in the middle, and we've got a proclamation for you. I will tell you that I understand all too well how hard it is sometimes for military, especially military kids. I do have grandkids that are military children. They're up in Colorado Springs right now. And even as young as they are, I see sometimes the challenges that they face. Last summer, they faced a deployment and a new baby, and all of those things happened at once. And I've been an awful lot of miles on my cart last year, don't get me telling you. So, because it's important that the families support each other. It's important that our community supports our military. And we want you to know that we do every single day. We pray for our military and we support them. So I do have a proclamation from the city offices. Whereas April marks the nation's Month of the Military Child, a time to celebrate military children for their service, commitment, and sacrifices made alongside their parents in support of the military mission. And whereas the Month of the Military Child provides an opportunity to pay tribute to New Mexico's military children, as well as those assigned here for other states, to honor them, celebrate their spirit, and let our men and women in uniform know that while they are taking care of us, we are taking care of their children. And whereas purple is the color that symbolizes all branches of the military, as it is the combination of Army green, Air Force blue, Coast Guard blue, Marine red, and Navy blue. And whereas all citizens of Alamogordo, New Mexico, and Altera County are encouraged to wear purple on Friday, April 25th, as a visible way to show support and thank military children for their strength and sacrifices. Now therefore, I, Susan Payne, mayor of the city of Alamogordo, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 25th, 2025, as purple up for Military Kids Day in Alamogordo, and urge all citizens to wear purple and its subservience. And we wanna thank you for your service. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
(applause)
Thank you. Thank you, it was very nice to meet all of you. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. It's good to see you.
Absolutely. Where's our team? These guys do a phenomenal job. I want you to know that it has been my honor to work with them regularly and work on different things, and it's been my honor. And if you do not know the man staff at Holloman Air Force Base, yes, you know, we're very proud of you. And we're honored to work with you. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you. All right. And now, the moment we've all been waiting for. You know you guys have been waiting like we have. We're very excited. We have a presentation that I'm really looking forward to hearing. I've read all the information, and as I'm sure you all have. We have a presentation for RFP 2025-001, Operation and Maintenance of the Family Fund Center. That feels so good to say "Operation and Maintenance," I have to tell you. We have... You know, I've got some people listed here, but there's a lot of you, so I'm just gonna let you come up and introduce yourselves and whoever's coming up. I'm not sure who it is, but I'll let you come up and introduce yourself. Are you Mr. Frazel? Oh, okay, perfect. All right, very good.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. My name is Frazel Jr. I'm chief operating officer for the Mesclero Apache Tribe's Hospitality and Gaming Operations. So everything that we do that makes money under reservation is under our umbrella. So before I get started, I kinda wanted to introduce some of my team that's with me, if you don't mind, if that's okay. And just... So I really kinda wanted to be more of a conversation. I know you guys have read our response to your RFP and kind of the presentation, so I want you to be able to ask questions. And don't be shy to interrupt me or anybody else and ask questions as we go so we can be respectful of your time and we can get through this quickly. But first and foremost, I wanted to introduce our president of the Mesclero Apache Tribe, Ms. Laura P. Dill.
How are you? It's good to see you again.
Councilman, Mr. Alfred La Paz.
Good evening.
Our legal counsel for In-N-Out Gods, Mr. John Wheeler. Our executive chef of all of our operations, Mr. Brendan Gokenauer.
Sir.
Our chief financial officer, Ms. Elena Artiaga. Our director of recreation, Mr. Lauren Gallerito. Our director of food and beverage, Mr. Alan Kurgan. Mr. Stephen Palation, he's our director of human resources for all of our operations here. Mr. Robert Kai, he's our director of security and risk management. My beautiful wife, Cassie. I always work all the time, so I take her with me.
She's the important one, right?
Michelle Henson, she's our information technology director. My son, Frazel the 30th, he's got a 4.0, he's a senior in high school.
Congratulations. (applause)
Mr. Brian Shendo, he's the tribal administrator for the tribe. He's an Army veteran, is one of them. Mr. Orlando Alvarez, he's our marketing manager. And then I also have two former councilmen in the back, Mr. Owen Little and Mr. Larry Pruswell. So that's everybody here right now.
Welcome, everybody.
Just showing support for what we're trying to do here. So I just pressed the button. So whenever I sent out the presentation, there was a little formatting issues in this, so we didn't purposely make typos on it. It's just kinda the formatting I wanna go through. But I wanna go through it as quickly as possible so we can kinda open it up for some questions for everybody here. But kinda, this really outlines kind of the operation and the maintenance of the Family Fund Center and really emphasizes our commitment to creating something vibrant for the community and caters to visitors and families and everybody within Alamogordo and Mesclero communities alike. So I'll run through that really quick. So first, I kinda wanted to give a little background about myself and kinda where we're at within our company-wise. So as I said, my name is Frazel Jr. I've been in charge of the company for the last 14 years now. So I've been very fortunate that the tribe has trusted me with their operations, and we've really been able to build a great team behind us with the support of the Mesclero Apache Tribe. So the In-N-Out Gods is owned and operated by the Mesclero Apache Tribe under a charter that allows it to operate. And it actually has its own separate management board. So it's a separate entity of the tribe. So the contract, if to be approved by the city, would be with the In-N-Out Gods. So we have our tribal government here just showing support, saying that they support what we do and how we wanna move forward with this. Part of that, part of the agenda here is I'm gonna go through his executive summary and kind of the whole strategy of what we wanna do for the Family Fund Center and what we think would be great. A lot of that's gonna include really what the community wants and how the community of Alamogordo wants to see this place operate. I know it's been closed for a long time. I don't know exactly how long. But, you know, we think getting it open right away and being able to make money for the city and for the tribe would be a big plus. So our proposal here kinda outlines the introduction, our experience, and the community connection that we wanna have going forward with In-N-Out Gods and the city of Alamogordo. So, you know, IMG, we really excel in managing entertainment venues and restaurants and recreational activities. We're ready to acquire the expertise in the bowling operations that are here. And through training and hiring professionals, you know, we have a proven track record that ensures that the management aligns with Alamogordo's vision. You know, and the RFP that you guys sent out, there was emphasis on a lot of things, one of them being hours of operation here. We really chose what we thought, and this is all really based on what happens going forward. Things, if we were to get this contract as things progresses, we wanna make sure to fulfill these obligations, but also listen to what the community wants at the same time. So we believe being open seven days a week is key to making sure that the operation is successful and not being closed when people wanna be there. So 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, Friday, 11:00 AM to midnight, Saturday, 10:00 AM to midnight, and Sunday, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. You know, there's a diverse population when it comes to going to the fund center. You want your kids to be involved. You want the senior citizens and all of the, everybody in between, and gives them proper times to visit the operation there. So when we did our walk-through before, you know, there was... In all reality, you have a beautiful facility there. It's pretty much close to turnkey. There's not gonna be a lot of things that you have to do to update. You know, there's gonna have to be brought in arcade operations and certain small things. But there's really not so much that you have to do to get the place open because, you know, it's fairly new. So, you know, we're really just making sure to implement a comprehensive maintenance program for the facility, modernize all the entertainment options that is there, whatever, TV, music, whatnot. Modernize everything. Create a family-friendly environment. You know, creating some dedicated play zones for younger children, promote a family-friendly atmosphere, and encourage some family visits. And I'll talk a little bit later on about kinda some of the stuff that we would like to see, but a lot of this is gonna be driven from input from the community if this contract were to go through. And really themed events and sanctioned league play. So I, myself, I'm an avid bowler. When I say that, I don't just go bowl two or three times a year like I play golf every year. You know, I've been in the bowling league for the last five years with my wife and my son, and we bowl every single week, and we understand the needed aspect of filling the place on a daily basis. You know, league play can fill your bowling alley for three to four times, three or four times a week, if you do it right and you do it well. So you have to be able to get that community aspect in. There's prob... I would assume, and I'm sure that there's a lot of great people here that wanna start a bowling, sanctioned bowling play. And from what I understand, from what the city managers told me, that the lanes there can be played with sanctioned plays. So that's a plus that you have here in the city. And then it just takes the right person to coordinate those things and get league play going. So with us, you really get something different. You get experienced management. You know, the executives I have here and the ones involved, it's really people that have been here for 20-plus years. And those that have been here have been other places and had understood the aspect of entertainment, recreation, and how to get stuff done. Preventive maintenance is key. You know, we understand that it's not our facility and that we have to take care of it if we were to occupy it. And we wanna make sure that preventive maintenance is done on a regular basis and things are taken care of, as well as cleaning protocols put in place. So any questions so far?
No, you're good.
All right. So, you know, a big part of your RFP when you sent out was about community engagement. You know, what are we gonna do to involve the community and make sure? Because that's what it was built for, right? I mean, it was built for the community here of Alamogordo. And in all reality, you know, a lot of our people, we come up to Alamogordo on a regular basis. We're here all the time. I was born in Alamogordo. I was raised under reservation. And my family and I are up here on a regular basis. And we really enjoyed going to the Family Fund Center when it was open. You make a day out of it and go bowling, then go to the movies after that. So really, we think it's key to involve the community and get engagement in. So some of the things we're gonna do that we wanna tie into, that we would wanna tie into this, is making sure that we can use this opportunity to kinda stimulate some economic growth in the region here with other businesses and partner with the local community and other businesses to ensure that all those other people are thriving as well. Job creation, we anticipate that it'll probably create anywhere from 35 to 40 jobs within the center through our staffing plan. That's part of the presentation that we gave you there. In reality, through my conversations, we have... You know, currently, we employ a little over 1,000 people in our operations with all of our properties. So it's anywhere from 1,000 people in the off-season to about 1,300 in the main, in the summer season. So a lot of the people that work for us are actually Alamogordo residents. And a lot of those have expressed that, hey, if there's an opportunity to still work for the In-N-Out Gods, but we don't have to drive 40 minutes to get there, we would love to have that opportunity. So I really don't think staffing the place would be too hard of a problem. If not, I have a seasoned HR executive that can make sure that that happens here. So job creation, benefits. You know, it's something that a lot of companies can't provide. We're big enough that we provide great benefits for our team members. Pay time off, health insurance, 401K, the whole benefit package. It would be part of our operation. So I think that's something that would be beneficial to people that live here that wanna work for us. And career advancement, it's not just the Family Fund Center, like I said before. If we can identify individuals that wanna pursue other operations in hotel, food and beverage, and gaming, you know, there's operations that they can advance in their careers as well with such a big company. So, you know, we wanna be able to support local businesses within the region here. You know, there's a lot of people in town that you wanna be able to be involved, I assume, and giving preference to local vendors and suppliers to source goods and services to strengthen the actual fund center and the community here. Being able to organize vendor fairs and help identify local partnership opportunities and being able to cross-promotion and market with all the other small businesses within the town. I think with our marketing engine that we have, which I'll kind of explain about our marketing plan here in a little bit, we can definitely boost not just our business, but the local businesses here as well. So we have some... You know, it's not just locals as well here that we wanna target to. You know, there's a... Our biggest customers for our property, In-N-Out Gods and Casino Apache, really come from El Paso and West Texas. We bring in a lot of out-of-state business. So to get from El Paso to our place, you have to drive through here. So being able to target those individuals coming through and being able to get them to stop in the fund center would be key to making it successful. Collaborating with the military, you know, a lot of people talk about that all the time, but being able to actually implement it and give military discounts and set up military leagues or military deployment support groups that we can work with at the Family Fund Center would be great. We believe that we could be able to set up regional tournaments, hosting regional tournaments, attracting visitors. You know, there's a lot of bowling tournaments that go along across the state. You know, there's several big ones that are various areas. I think Holloman here hosts one as well. So with such a big bowling center, you'd be able to be a prime place to be able to host those tournaments. And package deals. So, you know, there's a lot of birthday parties that wanna go, and you have a big space, you have an opportunity to make money there, but also do it responsibly, not so much. You know, I wanna make sure that it's affordable for individuals to be able to go there and be able to have fun, get affordable food, and spend a couple hours and have a good time and not have to spend a ton of money to do it. You know, we believe that being able to keep the Family Fund Center busy on a daily basis and not have to just rely on your nighttime business, you have to partner with local programs. So in part of the staffing plan, you will see that we have a dedicated, kind of a group sales, marketing coordinator-type person that will do community outreach, that will partner with the local youth programs for after-school initiative, discounted rates, fundraisers, and, you know, special leagues for those students during the summer as well. And so when you have students, that brings parents as well, and everybody has something that they can go to and have fun at the same time when you're able to have that outreach to reach out to those individuals. Also, it ties in with the schools and STEM developments of being able to come up with items like free bowling clinics, junior bowling leagues, education partnerships, and really hospitality training programs. We always need new up-and-coming people in the hospitality industry to get in our business and move forward with us. and, and move forward with us. And being able to, to engage with our local senior communities. So, you know, having special programs for seniors that they can come in early in the mornings and have fun, and, and being able to spend time with one another, partner with local transportation to, to get them there. I think eventually, as we get, if we do get this contract and we get it going, we can actually start providing transportation ourselves in the future as well at some point. And being able to get those grandparents to get out there with their grandkids and have a good time, and, and fill those gaps that we need whenever they want to be there as So, another portion of that is, is bowlers with disabilities, being able to have a sensory-friendly environment with adaptive equipment, being able to train the staff to be sensitive and inclusive for those, those people, so they can get involved in, in bowling and, and the things that are happening at, at the center there. Military appreciation would be a big portion of that, providing big discounts and military appreciation, military appreciation events and, and deployment support, support programs. You know, I know there's a lot of military presence here, and, and we have a lot in our community as well, so being able to partner and, and give significant discounts to our local militaries would be really important to us. So, you know, also, it ties in with that is, is creating some community engagement, civic pride, designated charitable partners program, we rotate that quarterly to try and, and raise money for those, those causes there. In-kind space donations for nonprofit fundraisers, being able to partner at certain times to, to help those individuals. And, you know, we thought up of an annual community impact day where we would donate 100% of those proceeds back to local causes on, on the day there. And other summer bowling leagues for youth. So, marketing strategy, you know, this, having a great marketing strategy is, is, is key to making sure that you keep the place full all the time. I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but, you know, End of the Mountain Gods isn't the biggest casino in the state of New Mexico by any means. You know, there's a lot bigger casinos up in northern New Mexico, in Albuquerque, and Santa Fe, that have a big population base to grow from. But, you know, social media is, is a big, is a big thing for us. We are by far the most followed resort and casino in the state. We have over 160,000 followers on our social media account. And that's not just because we're lucky, that's because I have a good team that knows what our customers want and how to outreach to those customers and make that happen. So, the benefit of partnering with somebody like us is you get that marketing machine that can leverage that, those capabilities that we have better than anybody else in the state to, to leverage the Family Fund Center and make sure that people are there on a regular basis. So, being able to have the social media outreach, innovative marketing strategies of people that you have in-house, you automatically get that service with, with us, because there's, there's several departments that are what we call global within our organization. So, marketing being one of them, they don't just market for End of the Mountain Gods, they market for Casino Apache, Ski Apache, Mesclero Big Game Hunts, our recreation operations, even outreach and marketing for our team member daycare center that we have. So, that global operation, just like our information technology department, you know, we spend nearly half a million dollars a year on cybersecurity to make sure that we don't get hacked, and we have experts in that field that take care of all of our cybersecurity, and that's just part of it that comes with being able to partner with someone as big as, as our, our company here. So, that, that's key in a marketing strategy. Community partnerships, being able to build with local organizations and just being able to market that aspect so it's done in a positive way and not ignored, and we're just opening the doors on a daily basis and hoping people show up. You got to be able to show what you offer, and that, that way you can keep prices low as well. So, you don't have to raise prices if you have people coming on a daily basis. And doing in-house promotions, so offering special promotions and events inside the Fund Center that will entice families to come out and be there, and spend money, and just have a good time for the entire day. So, you know, another thing that we have, you know, currently we have a, our, our gaming system that we have, so you, you earn points off gaming, right? So, that's, that's really what it's based on. You get the free rooms, you get free, free food and beverage based on, on how much you gamble. However, we'll, we'll be switching, we'll be upgrading our system in the summer to where you'll be able to use your loyalty card to earn points on all non-gaming activities as well. So, you'll be able to earn points on food and beverage, hotel, that you can redeem for free stuff down the road. So, being able to partner with our loyalty program in the future will be another plus for the Family Fund Center where you could use your loyalty card to earn points in our operation there. I'm not promising when that's going to happen, but that's going to happen eventually. So, we, you know, we do off, we operate over 10 F&amp;B operation outlets. You know, it's, it's our, actually our biggest department, we have over 500 team members that work in our F&amp;B operations. And, you know, we take pride in a lot of things we do. You know, oftentimes when you think of resort and casino, you think of, you know, high-priced options, and in a, in an environment where you have, you can keep people there on property, you can charge those items, but this is kind of a different approach. You know, you want to be able to have, be able to have food and beverage that's affordable enough to where you can not just spend your entire budget on food and beverage, or vice versa with bowling, not spend it all on bowling and not have anything left to eat. So, you have the copy of the menu that we, that we proposed, keeping it simple, but also, also good enough that you can get really whatever you want. So, you have your classic bowling alley, what we call bowling alley fair, so your, your burgers, wings, nachos, and pizza. So, you guys have a really impressive pizza oven in that kitchen that you have there, so you could really pump out some pizza out of that kitchen. So, we put a, a good-sized pizza menu on there. There's going to be healthy, family-friendly options, local-inspired dishes, as well as you can, you can go in, you can get a burger or a simple wrap, and then you can, or you could also get a, a steak if you want to. There's, there's something in the middle for everybody that we propose. You know, we, we like to update our menus on a seasonal basis, so what you see here probably won't, wouldn't be the same in six months, we'd like to change it up. We do sales mixes on a regular basis, we see what people don't like, and we drop it, and we add something else, and, and try and update. The culinary team does a great job. So, you wouldn't just have one chef, you would have one head chef in the kitchen, but you would also have the support of all of our other operations where other chefs give their ideas, they come in, they do testing, and they, they train and make sure that everybody's up to speed. So, that's, that's one of the, the major pluses about having multiple dining outlets is that you can do that. We can move people around when somebody doesn't show up, we have somebody that can build menus. And with our buying power alone, with all of our operations, we really can leverage our vendors more than anybody else can. So, we can, we procure better prices than most people can in this region, because we're the biggest customer of anybody else in southern New Mexico. We buy more food by far than anybody else because of the amount of outlets that we run. Same way with our alcohol. We have a really good program where we can keep alcohol prices lower, but at the same time be responsible and, and make sure that we're doing things correctly with your liquor Any questions so far? I know I'm going fast, but...
Doing fine.
Not maybe we'd wait till the end.
Yeah, you're doing fine. Okay. So, you know, with, with us, you have, you have a really experienced management team that, that's been here a long time, I talked about that a little bit. But, you know, the guys that we have involved in this operation, the people behind me and other people that, that we hit, that couldn't be here tonight. So, the way, the way we kind of work with our properties is we have the one-point person that's kind of like director of operations or general manager that manages the people that you would hire there. If we were to get this contract, we would, first, first thing that we would do is we would hire somebody as a, as a dedicated general manager to run the operation. And they would get the support from the global executives to make sure that we're operating that, that facility the way it's supposed to be run. So, it's, it would be a team effort, you wouldn't just have an individual there that, if they get sick, you can't have somebody that can step in and run the place, there's always somebody that can step in and, and take care of business. So, our leadership team would be the backing of that, would recruit a general manager and local area hiring to make that happen. Like I said, we have a lot of team members that work for us that live here in Alamogordo, and I don't think staff, staffing the place would be that hard. So, you know, I could have went on and listed a lot of things on our past record and performance. You know, some of the things we've done recently is we, we implemented a Topgolf Swing Suite, and that's something that I think would be beneficial. You have a pretty big meeting operation there, meeting rooms on the side that I wasn't really aware of, there, I guess because they haven't been in use, or they just haven't, it's hard to see on the side. But, you know, virtual golf, the virtual swing suite, it's not just golf, there's, there's hockey, there's football, there's soccer on those things. And, you know, I know, I'm sure you guys have seen recently that Tiger Golf League, the virtual golf league is being, is really big now. And I think virtual golf would be great, and being able to have that Topgolf Swing Suite there at the facility would be great. You can even have leagues on those, on virtual golf as well. So, if you're able to go to the Fund Center, have arcades, have virtual golf and sanctioned leagues, and get food and beverage at the same time, I think it'd be a great experience for everybody that goes. We do a lot of various things, we, we run our, our golf course, we operate Big Game Hunts. I think we're the only established resort and casino that can say we offer Big Game Hunts that, on that scale. And we, we did, we have, during our time here, we have built zip lines, big zip lines. Some of the, the zip lines at Ski Apache are some of the biggest in the world, and we have the ones that's going over our lake here at End of the Mountain Gods. So, it's not that we haven't done anything in the last 14 years, we've done a lot, and we've made a lot of improvements, and we know how to change things up. Things aren't going to be the same every single year, it's something that I tell my team all the time. If we're doing something the same every year, we got to start thinking, we got to start being more innovative, because you're not going to make more money if you don't try new things. And so, that, that, that mindset will go to this operation as well. You know, part of the, a lot, part of your RFP that you sent out was focused a little bit on financial accountability, making sure that you understand what's going on. So, I wanted to touch on that a little bit. So, you know, we asked, when we asked, we asked for numbers, so what, what was the Fund Center doing so we can build a budget in the last five years? And I guess you guys never got any from the previous operator, you didn't know how much it made on a daily basis, and you didn't know where, where the actual finances were going. So, you know, I was able to, to do my own research and basically off experience of what, what we've done in the past, build a, build a pretty comprehensive budget that I think's fair. But, being able to, going back a little bit, trying to understand pricing and rates, you know, we built a budget that would, we think would be realistic based on what we could charge. So, being able to create standard pricing rates, dynamic pricing strategy. So, what dynamic pricing means is that, you know, it's, it's the busiest time of night, you can raise rates a little just to make sure that you're trying to spread out that, that crowd to different, you can get a little more discount if you're going on off-peak hours. Being able to do family packages and deals, being able to get a lot of people in at a, at a decent rate, and league discounts. So, I talked about leagues a little bit earlier, you know, I'm really adamant about leagues and sanctioned leagues, that's what's going to fill your bowling alley mid-week, and those, there's a lot of good people that will arrange leagues and want to work together to, yeah, you give them a pretty hefty discount, but they're filling your center, they're having a good time, they're spending money on food and beverage. So, part of your RFP, you talked about a revenue sharing model, and we think, we also think that's the best way to go. You know, you take a, a percentage of revenue off of the top based off of how much we make in gross, and it's our responsibility to make sure that we're profitable after that. So, we think it's a mutual benefit to both the, the city and, and the company here, so we're, the city's getting a return on their investment, and we're being able to be rewarded for the hard work that we'll be putting into the Family Fund Center there. And transparency and affordability, so you'll be able to see every single thing that happens through there, and I'll explain that here in a second. So, being in the industry that we're in, the gaming industry, we're highly regulated. We're, we're regulated by our local gaming commission, by the state of New Mexico, and the National Indian Gaming Association. So, we have, the way we operate that, and I'm, I'm proud to say that our, our accounting department hasn't, hasn't had any audit findings in over a decade that I can remember. They're very skilled, they're very sharp, and they understand what they're doing. We have a third-party auditor that we use, BDO that we're required to use, so we get audited on a quarterly basis and a yearly basis as well. So, we can commit to several things. So, what we do in all of our outlets right now currently is we require every supervisor and every manager to do a shift report, so it's based on revenues, things that are happening within the operation. Good comments, bad comments, people didn't show up, whatnot, you would have access to those reports on a daily basis, so you'll actually be able to see what's, how much money is brought in on a daily basis and what people are complaining about on a daily basis if you want to. We can commit to monthly profit and loss statements, so, so you'll see exactly what the Fund Center's doing, top line and bottom line. So, what, what you'd be taking home as, as a city, and what we would be taking at the end of the, at the end of the P&amp;L on a monthly basis. You would have access to our quarterly audited financial reports for the Family Fund Center. So, I'm not going to give you our reports for our gaming operations, of course, but you'll be able to see the audited reports for the Family Fund Center, as well as annual financial statements that are signed by a third-party auditor. So, this isn't just us telling you that our financials are sound, this is third-party that comes in and audits everything that we do there. So, you know, an RFP that was sent out, it really, it really emphasized a lot of things, and I just want to give kind of a comfort, I guess you could say, to, to the commissioner here. You know, post 2000, the financial crash of 2008, you know, we haven't, we have had really an impeccable financial record, and we've met all of our financial obligations to our stakeholders, meaning the tribe and our debt holders as well. So, we, we've been able to, to do what's necessary to make sure that we've never missed a payment, we've never missed payroll to any of our employees, our team members have never worried about getting paid on, on a Friday, they've always been sure that they've gotten their paycheck. And we just have really an impeccable track record since this team has been in charge to make sure that we've never defaulted on anything, and that would include payments to the city for what we would owe for this Family Fund Center. Ed, just to know that, you know, we're, we're financially sound, we, we have enough liquidity to be able to open it. Like I said earlier, you know, you have a pretty close to turnkey operation, but there's going to be some investment to get the thing running, you know, in regards to, you know, hiring 45 team members and training them for a couple of weeks is going to be an investment. Buying all of the food and beverage and alcohol, and all of the other things it's going to take to open this operation, getting the arcade games and whatnot, is going to require an investment, and there's not going to be very many people that will be liquid enough to do that. So, and we're, we're definitely seasoned in making sure that happens. One of my favorite things to do is large projects and renovations, that's, that's one of my favorite things. Right now, we're going through a, a room renovation for our west tower of our hotel, so we're going through a $4 million renovation, updating some bathrooms, carpet, and whatnot, and we'll be doing the, the east tower in the fall. So, we have a lot of different projects going on at any given time, and we have the necessary project managers to take care of those things as they happen. Definitely, this will be a much smaller scale, but you have the expertise that can get it done. And the know-how and the thought process to get new developments going within that Fund Center. So, one of those things, one of the things is that we've thought about was your laser tag area that you have. It's a rather large area, I was surprised, I had never been in the laser tag portion, but it's a two-level, and it's huge in there. Laser tag is not the most profitable thing if you know anything about it, and it's, it's a rather, it's real estate, really, when you think about it. You're, you're trying to make money based on square footage and your operation. So, there's a, there's a number of things that we would want to do in that place, but I think what'd be most appropriate at the time would be if we were to get the contract, go out with a community survey and see what people want in that area. We definitely want to make a change there, we would recommend a change in the laser tag area, but what is it that people want to see? Do they want to see, do they want to see mini roller rink? Do they want to see a multi-use facility for toddlers, or do they want to see a nightclub or whatnot? Is there, there's so many different things you could do there, but being able to, before we spend the money and not want to, and do something that's not going to, not going to be well-received, we want to be able to see what the input of the, the community is and run it by you before that happens. So, I think the whole goal would be being able to get in the building, get the place open, start making money, and then start, start trying to do your innovations from there. So, you know, really in this industry, nobody does it better than we, than we do, and I can confidently say that our financial performance is impeccable, we've always surpassed financial expectations. say that our financial performance is impeccable. We've always surpassed financial expectations. The tribe can attest to that. You know, we've, year after year, we've been able to beat expectations and budget numbers through innovation and just being able to have good ideas, change things up on a regular basis. Resilience over challenges, that's a big one. You know, we had to close for COVID, just like everybody else did, and even during that time, we were still able to meet our obligations to the tribe and our debt holders. And just this past summer was a big example of that. You know, we basically had to close for a month. We housed first responders for the fire. During the busiest time of year, we lost millions of dollars, but we didn't miss a beat. We were able to meet our financial obligations to the tribe and get through those things. So no matter what happens, our team has been through it. We know what to do. We know how to take care of it, and if something were to come up, you can trust that you have an experienced team that can move the place forward. And that just basically leads to our record revenue figures that we've experienced over the last 14 years. So, you know, I really put some thought into the conclusion of my letter on the back of the RFP. So if you don't read anything, I'd like you to read that last page that I put in there about our commitment. I don't really want to spend the time to go through it, but I just want to make it heartfelt known about what we do, and dispel anything out there that you've ever heard about what we care about. You know, there's something that really struck me over a year ago when President Padilla was elected here. One of her first things that she told me was, hey, I need you to have better relationships with our neighbors. And I took that to heart, and that just seemed like, it came up with a great opportunity that we can do something that benefits both the city of Alamogordo and the tribe at the same time, and for the citizens of both Alamogordo and the surrounding communities. Our people come to Alamogordo a lot, and they would really love being able to have access to a first-class facility that they can afford as well, and I think that's a plus for both of our communities. So, that's that, and I don't know if you guys have questions now, or if you'd like President Padilla to say a few things first, and...
Do you want to come up? Do you have anything? Welcome, by the way, to our commission meeting. I'm sorry I didn't do that earlier. I got caught up in the month of the military.
No, that's cool.
It's very nice to see you again.
It's good to see all of you and to be here also. And I think this would just be a really cool community thing, like he keeps mentioning. I've been here several times with my own kids, going to birthday parties or having birthday parties, and that's always a big thing in Mescalero, is having the big parties for your kids, and, you know, and it's also nice not to have to cook and all that. But I'm very supportive of this project, and I really did say that too, what he said about getting along with our communities better. And I don't know if you've heard anything about after the fires. We have really made that effort since the fires occurred last year in June, and we are going places with our neighbors in Riedoso, and going to the legislative sessions, and Santa Fe, coordinating things and so forth. So that's something I would like to be able to reach out down here. Otero is primarily our county, and I would like to see more of that going on, reaching out and working together. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Can I say something, Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes.
So I just...
Sorry, Crystal.
I'm sorry. Before we open up for questions, I just kind of wanted to give a background now that we're at this point, and there's a lot of people watching. I just kind of wanted to give a brief overview. I won't take too much time. As you recall, the RFP, we didn't want to tie any company's hands, so all we said is you need bowling and you need food. We wanted whatever company to put in to bring what they were successful at. And so we kept it pretty open, but we did emphasize family-friendly and budget-friendly. We went to a revenue-sharing model, because if you recall, the monthly lease payment was going to be outrageous, and that was one of the big concerns. It was, I think, $36,000 or $60,000. It was really high, and we didn't think that any company could be successful with that kind of monthly rent. And then I just want to emphasize, because I've gotten a lot of questions about LEEDA funds, there is no LEEDA funds here. This is all private investment. The city is making sure that the building is up to code, it's ready for them to move in, and we're taking, the bowling lanes, we're making sure that those are workable. And then the final thing I wanted to say is access has been a question. So I've asked for a meeting with ZTRAN to see if we can get that on the route as well. So I just wanted to open that up, and I also wanted to shout out, because this closed on November 30th, and we're finally at this point, but it took a long time, but there was a lot of work in the background, and I want to thank Ronnie, Evelyn, Paul Bennett, Tony Gonzalez, Parks and Rec, Code Enforcement, and the Police Department, because we've had, everybody's had a hand in just securing the building from the beginning and to making sure it was ready to go. The kitchen, the outside looked good, the facility was up to date. So I just wanted to thank all of the staff, because it was a group effort to get us here, especially with the pending litigation. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Now that you've said all that, with all the timeline and everything, and I'm sure it's the question on everybody's mind, is what is a timeframe that we're looking at? If we proceed forward, what is your timeframe in getting the doors open again?
Well, you know, that's a good question. So, you know, it could be as little as 60 days, I think. You might not have everything up and running. For example, if you're, from what I understand, the arcade machines are completely gone, right? We'd have to procure new ones.
Aren't they gone?
They're part of the litigation. We're going to put them in storage.
Oh, they're in storage. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, I really don't know the lead time on, we operate a couple arcades ourselves, so we do have a vendor, but I really don't know the lead time of being able to get arcade. That doesn't mean that you can't open the kitchen and the bowling alley if the bowling lanes are in operation right away. It'd just be a matter of getting staffing, getting them properly trained, and opening the door for those operations. You wouldn't be able to have the virtual golf right away. I think we would be able to move that over and get it done. We have a current contract with Topgolf that expires in November, but there are better companies out there that are cheaper that we want to go with, but that doesn't mean we can't get that in there pretty quickly as well. So, answer that question, probably a minimum of 60 days, a maximum of 90, but I really wouldn't want to miss the summer season, because it gets rather hot down here, and I would think that people want to be inside. So, I don't like taking forever on things. I like working really fast. One of the benefits of being a private business is we get through a lot of the red tape, and the tribal government has been really good about allowing us to get things done, because we've been successful at making things happen. So maybe I'll surprise you and do it quicker, but that's kind of timeline I can think we can have.
Anybody else have any questions? No questions?
Guys are too easy.
Come up with something.
Pretty self-explanatory in the paperwork that they gave us, so.
Very detailed.
I said it's pretty self-explanatory in the paperwork.
It is. You did line it out very well, yes.
Very nice presentation.
And I was expecting to get grilled up here.
No, no, we're...
I could just make one suggestion, just put the carnitas fries on the menu.
Make a note of that, chef.
I don't want to have to drive 40 minutes so I can get some.
Those are favorite and broken arrow.
Well, I can tell you that, for me, I actually was here when we opened the Family Fund Center the first time. First of all, and I still maintain this, the access for me is not an issue. I think, I think that's some kind of a, it's a narrative that has been put out there, but that movie theater has been out there for well over 20 years, and I, kids do not have a problem getting access to that. The other thing I think is important for people to understand is, I don't believe that it was ever meant to be a place where you just dropped your kids off and picked them up later. That was never the idea. It was a family entertainment center. I did like what you said. I remember when we opened it the first time, I had a comment. I actually just, it came up in my memories the other, got to love social media, right? Where I had said to one of the reporters, I said, you know, this is exciting, because families can get up on a Saturday morning and, you know, get ready, whatever, go down to the Family Fund Center, spend some time there, maybe have lunch, and then go over to the movie theater, and then maybe have dinner or something. And then, before you know it, they've spent a whole day there. I still maintain that that is, that is a reality, I think, that can happen. And so I like that you mentioned that earlier, because I completely agree with you. I think that, that's sort of the vision, you know, that I certainly had for it. And I'm excited about the possibility. I, you know, I was excited the first time, not because I was really excited about the city going, and, to me, they should have stayed out of private enterprise, but, you know, it was a decision by the voters, and so I was excited about just getting it open. We did have a lot of trouble finding a management company the first time. I think this time there was a little more interest, because it was already there. The first time, we had basically a shell, right? We didn't have anything. And so I think the fact that it's there now, and ready for somebody to, like you said, potentially move into, really helps us. But I, when I heard that In the Mountain Gods was interested, I'll just tell you that I was pretty intrigued, because it makes a lot of sense to me. And I do believe also in partnering with our neighbors. I, so I agree with you, President Padilla. I think that it's important that we do that, and we, you know, are working with our surrounding partners. So I'm really excited about this. I think we probably don't have a lot of questions, because you really did line out, it was very well put together, and I think it basically answered all of our questions. Does anybody have anything else at all?
Well, I did have a question about the disability, how you were going to actually do that part. Is it just for the lanes, or is it just the facility total? And I did hear that they are going to try to get the buses to take people up to the, is it in, are they going to do that, or no?
The ZTRAN bus to the, so we have to negotiate with ZTRAN, since we already pay for some of that. We, I just need to get in the room and put that in the contract. So it shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, we do have a blind population, and that was one of the things that was brought up when I met with them. They wanted to be able to get to, you know, different places, and having that, you know, to eat. And I'm sure they're, I don't know about them bowling, because I haven't seen that, but they do want to enjoy some of the amenities that we offer here in Alamogordo.
Yeah, and I think that would be part of the outreach program, finding out the individuals that are in need, and then tailoring what we offer, and the training to the staff on those individuals, and grow it as it comes along. So being able to buy equipment if necessary to help those individuals have access to whether it be bowling, the food and beverage operations, just getting in and out of the facility. So building that plan as it comes up would be key, and just understanding who would be coming.
I have one more question.
Oh, sorry.
The meeting rooms on the side of the building, I don't know how many there are, three, four?
There's three.
There's three on the side? Are you still planning to keep some of those as meeting rooms to utilize? I just know, like, the Real Estate Association uses it for luncheons and things like that that might bring in business as well.
Well, I was rather surprised at how big they were. So I think the virtual golf would only take up one and a half of those. And there's collapsible walls there, and I think you could still have plenty of space to have 30, 40 people meet in that area as well.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
I was laughing, because it said disability for bowlers. I said, I need that. That's what I need, so.
And I do have a request. I would like to meet the chef.
He's right here.
Lessons? Do we do lessons? No, that's exciting. Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Well, thank you so much. We have this on...
Excellent presentation.
Well, pleasure's all mine, and on behalf of the company and the tribe, you know, thank you for inviting us up, and we really appreciate and anticipate future partnerships, and we just, we can assure you that we can do an amazing job, so.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
So we have this on item 11 at the end of, it will be towards the end of our meeting to take a vote on this, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. I have two people signed up for public comment. Joyce, I saw you. Where are you? There you are. How are you?
Good, good.
If you'll come up and state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Okay. I'm Joyce Gobract. I'm a bowler. I'm retired Air Force. I bowled all over...
Face this way, I'm sorry.
State side. I don't know, yeah.
That's all right.
Bowled here, bowled overseas, everywhere, bowled my whole life, whatever. I think the community's ready for a Fund Center, to be truly a Fund Center. I was part of the certification team that helped certify the lanes the first time, and test the lanes and everything. Tournaments are a huge moneymaker. I do tournaments all over New Mexico, women's nationals, everything. They're a huge moneymaker. Just a couple comments. We need a pro shop in there, and we need a bigger spectator area. And we have several of the New Mexico State Board members in Alamogordo that are willing to offer and help too, so. That's all.
Thank you, Joyce. It's good seeing you, by the way.
Thank you.
I think the facility actually used to have a pro shop when it was first opened. It was right as you walked in, the front door to the right.
Yeah, it was kind of a pro shop. It was also like a gift, like a, you earn the tickets or whatever, and you got those.
No, that was around the corner, but right as you walked in, the front door to the right, there was a, there's a door, and there was a little room, and that was a pro shop.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I think you're right.
Like in the atrium part of it, or the front part, the vestibule.
Yeah, I think you're right. And then I think they turned it into an office.
Yeah, or something.
Yeah, no, you're right. You're right. Okay, Marvin Green?
Marvin.
You're good? Okay. All right. I'm going to mark you off. Okay. Okay, so with that, we're going to move on to the city manager's report.
I'm just going to keep it real brief. I only have one thing. I am excited to announce that we hired a city attorney. His name is Daryl Morey. Just a little briefing about him. Daryl comes with a strong legal background in serving as the attorney advisor at Tinko Air Force Base, where he provides legal counsel to agency management on complex labor and employee issues, administrative proceedings, and adverse actions experienced that aligns with what we're looking for. He also brings valuable experience from his time as assistant tribal prosecutor for the Choctaw Nation, where he handled juvenile, deprived, and felony cases, and collaborated across departments and agencies. Daryl's combined experience in government operations, labor law, and public service makes him a strong addition to our leadership team. I think you guys are really going to like him. He's a, you know, he, Chief was with me. I believe Chief also liked him. He is going to be a great addition to our team. Although we're losing Ashley, I really think that we found a really great replacement. So he will start about mid-May, so that there's going to be a little overlap between Ashley and Daryl. So that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission.
Got one real quick. Could we, like, Public Works or you guys, reach out to NMDOT? On White Sands Boulevard, you know, they resurfaced, I don't know, 10 or 15 years ago, but mainly right in front of our zoo, from like 10th Street to Indian Wells. It's getting pretty washboard-y. If we could reach out, or maybe reach out to a former commissioner that happens to be a senator, and see if he can't pull some strings about getting maybe that section of it resurfaced, if they can't do the whole thing, or at least get the ball rolling on that.
Yeah, definitely. I know we've tried to reach out before. I'll let Jimmy, he seems to, Jimmy Vargas, the Public Works Director, he seems to get, with his personality, tends to get some people on board, and if that doesn't work, I'll reach out to Senator Paul.
Okay, yeah, it doesn't seem like it's the rest of us, just mainly from 10th to Indian Wells. But if they want to do the whole thing, that'd be great, but fix the South Overpass while they're at it, so.
I will let them know.
Okay.
And we still on our stoplight. Oh, you can't do that. That's right. Right at the bypass.
Yeah, somebody killed that deal, so.
Somebody's going to get killed over there. That's what, oh, they have.
They have.
That's right. Whatever. Yes. Okay. Does anybody else have anything? Nope.
Sorry, I just got a text from Commissioner, or former Commissioner Paul. He said he heard that comment, so.
That's funny.
Make it happen, Commissioner Paul. Senator Paul.
So I don't have to ask, because he already knows.
It's already on there.
Well, we know he's watching, anyway. Hey, Nick, how's it going? All right. Nobody else has anything? Nope. All right, very good. We are going to move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to pull off the consent agenda? No? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson. Can we put up the vote, please? And motion passes seven zero. Uh, we have nothing removed from the consent agenda, so we're going to move on to public hearings. Item eight, consider and act upon the question of whether or not the alcohol beverage control division should grant BW Gas and Convenience Retail LLC located at 1300 East Indian Wells Road a transfer of dispenser liquor license with off premises consumption only from the Allsops at 100 North White Sands Boulevard and a request of waiver at, as the nearest church is within 300 feet of the proposed premises. That was a mouthful, right? Okay, and Rachel?
Yes, Madam Mayor, as you read that, um, very lengthy, uh, in-depth subject line, this is a public hearing to consider that application for the two items for the transfer of the liquor license with, uh, on the premises consumption only. That's going to be over, um, they're requesting it to be over at Indian Wells on 1300. Um, and the transfer would come from the Allsops on 100, from the 100 North White Sands location, which is currently closed now. Um, this is also a request to waive that 300-foot rule from the ABC, um, from, uh, being 300 feet, um, from a church or a school. Calvary Baptist Church is right across the street. The property line is less than 100 feet away, according to the plat. On March 20th, I did contact the pastor of Calvary Baptist Church just to notify him of this public hearing. Um, tonight I was given a letter, um, from the regional manager, um, Marvin Green of Allsops, did hand me a letter from the pastor of, uh, Calvary Baptist Church dated April 8th. Um, it says, "To Allsops Organization, we, the members of Calvary Baptist Church of Alamogordo, New Mexico, um, grant the right for Allsops Convenience Store to sell liquor at their location." And the regional manager is here if you have any questions of him.
I do not, but can I just tell you that I appreciate all the money you're investing in your stores? I think they look great and, um, I, I, um, yeah, I really appreciate that. I've been really impressed with what you've been doing, um, in our city, so, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, so, we just need to take a vote. Do I, I guess I make a motion, right? Yeah, do I have a motion to approve item eight?
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Tapley. Can we put up the vote, please? We're going to move on to new business. Item nine, consider and act upon case V 2025 dash 0001, um, and it's in regards to variance. And Stella Rayel, our Stella Ray, that didn't sound right, did it? Stella Rayel, our city planner, has some information for us.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners. Uh, yes, this evening, the first case I am bringing in front of you, thank you, Rachel, um, is case V 2025 dash 0001A. Um, the property owner who is Amber Hartman resides in Irving, Texas. She is requesting to be granted a variance to decrease the parking requirement per ordinance from 103 parking spaces to 47 parking spaces. These parking spaces will only service patrons and employees of the proposed business. So, what we are talking about is the location at 3200 North White Sands Boulevard. This is actually our old Pepper's Grill. Um, so, a new business is proposing to come into the location. This is our zoning map. The size of that, what they're going to do is they're going to demolish Pepper's Grill and rebuild. Uh, the size of that building is going to be 5,591 square feet. Um, whoops, let me. So, as you can see, this area is right next to the Aristocrat. It's right next to the parking lot, um, of the fairgrounds. The portion to the south of that is owned by the city of Alamogordo. Um, so, just giving you a little heads up on that. Um, what I did when speaking to, to the proposed business, um, in the past when Pepper's Grill was actually at that location, they were utilizing a lot of our space as parking. Um, I am making sure that this new business is just within their lot lines. So, therefore, um, they feel that with the size of the lot and the size of the proposed building, they would not be able to meet that parking requirement, which I totally agree with. It would get really tight. So, um, just findings of fact, um, this is case, once again, V 2025 dash 0001A. Uh, we're requesting to decrease the parking requirement from 103 parking spaces to 47 parking spaces, spaces, excuse me. Those would actually just, um, accommodate the patrons of the business and the employees. Um, a public notice was placed in the Alamogordo Daily News. Four letters, um, to, were mailed by first-class mail to the, um, to the owners of record. Um, here is the protest area, so, there weren't very many people we had to contact on that. So, those four letters were mailed by first-class mail to all property owners of record within the 200 feet from the property excluding the public right-of-way, um, of which the variance is sought. And as of April 1st, when I put this slideshow together, there had been no letters or phone calls of oppos, opposition received. I did take this in front of our technical review committee for, for their opinion. And the technical review committee and staff recommends at this time approval since the request will not be materially detrimental to surrounding property owners or the public. So, I am open for questions.
What type of business will be going in there?
It is a plasma facility.
Plasma?
Hmm.
Like to take plasma out of it?
Yeah, exactly.
Like where you donate plasma?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what it's going to be. That's what they're proposing it's going to be.
Listen to all those, those comments there. We're all fascinated, aren't we?
I know, it's, it's something new to Alamogordo. I totally get it.
We couldn't hear back here what the new business is.
It's a plasma facility where you can donate plasma. Yeah, sorry about that.
I know, it, it's hard to hear back there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's interesting, okay. Does anybody have any questions? Do you feel like you're moving up in the world when you get a plasma facility and you're, and you're, I don't know, it just feels like-
From a restaurant to plasma facility.
And I really liked Pepper's too. I really miss that place, but, okay, whatever, that's fine. Interesting. Nobody has any questions? No? All right. With that, do I have a motion, um, for item nine?
I'll make a motion to approve item nine.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Can we put up the vote, please?
Thank you.
I think that's so interesting, a plasma facility.
And I'll just stay here since the next item is also mine.
We're going to move on to item 10, consider and act upon case V 2025 dash 0002. Um, it looks like the property owner of Murphy's Oil is also requesting a variance for parking.
Yes, so, um, this is a little strange for me. I've never had two variance, parking variance is come, come up at the same time. So, um, here we are with variance case 2025 dash 0002A. And yes, the property owner is requesting to be granted a variance to decrease the parking requirement per ordinance from 27 parking spaces to 14 parking spaces. Uh, the applicant and owner of this location is Murphy's Oil USA Incorporated. Um, let me just show you, this is a little hard to, uh, Rachel, can you bring up the site plan that I provided?
Sorry, I did, wasn't put in my file while I was gone, so-
Oh, okay.
I can't pull it up. Um, they actually have it on their, you should have it on your agenda book, so.
Oh, you have it? Okay, wonderful. Because I did provide it.
In your PDF agenda book.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. Um, just to, um, bring the public up to speed a little bit, this location is right next door to the Murphy's located on White Sands Boulevard. Um, so, it is the little island-looking shape of a lot there before the, the New York Avenue, right? That's that. Anyway, um, what they're proposing to do is, they're proposing to build a oil-changing facility there. And the reason for the decrease in, in parking spaces is because there will not be any customer, um, waiting room. Um, this is going to be one of these businesses that you stay in your vehicle while your oil is being changed. It's called stacking, so they won't require parking spaces except for employees, basically. Mayor, you've got that look.
Do you really feel like we're moving up in the community now?
Right.
A plasma and-
And, and a stacking oil-changing.
Innovative oil change business.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, this is a protest area, um, and of course, this here is the zoning map. It is within the C3 zoning district, so it does comply with, with our, um, ordinances for that district.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, so, um, findings of fact, um, once again, the case number is V 2025 dash 0002A. Uh, we're requesting decreasing the parking requirements from 27 parking spaces to 14 parking spaces. Public notice was placed in the Alamogordo Daily News. Five letters were mailed by first-class mail to all property owners of record within that 200-foot, um, from the property excluding the public right-of-way of the properties for which the variance is sought. As of April 1st, there have been no letters or phone calls of opposition received. Um, this is another item I took in front of our technical review committee, uh, for review. Um, no one, none of the departments within that committee had any issues with it, so along with the technical review committee and staff, uh, we are recommending approval since this request will not be materially detrimental to surrounding property owners or the public. And I am open for questions.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just because I'm confused. When, I hate to say that, it gets all over social media, but I am confused. Are you talking about, like, we're that elite?
No.
It's right across, it's right across from there. It's right next to the existing Murphy's.
To the south of Murphy's.
To the south of the Murphy's, where the gravel area is.
Where the old, where the old pizza mill used to sit.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, right next door to Murphy's.
You know where I'm talking about?
So that, yeah, I think so. So, that's going to fit there and that's going to-
It's, it will fit there. It's not going to be very big. Um, I did provide you the site plan, the proposed site plan, so yes, ma'am, it will fit.
It's only 1,500 square feet.
Yeah, it will meet the, the setback requirements within that zoning district and-
How are they going to egress out of, after they come through that, are they going to come around the building and come back out on New York Avenue or?
Yes.
Or into the Murphy's parking lot, is that?
Yes, they're going to enter through the Murphy's parking lot and then come in, yes.
And then exit.
So, they'll come in this way and then exit the same way? Okay, so we won't have traffic coming out into New York or into White Sands Boulevard?
No.
Or you will, but from the Murphy's parking lot?
Right, right.
Okay, that's right, there's a little confusing with McDonald's and Murphy's and-
Yeah, it gets a little congested sometimes, especially at lunch.
It gets a little, yes.
A little terrifying is what it is sometimes.
It does, there's just too many places to look when you're trying to pull out of one of those.
And we did, you know, when I presented this to the technical review committee, we looked at all that, you know, within that committee, we have police there, fire, um, they're all part of, of my committee. So, we all looked at all those different what-ifs and everybody was okay with it.
Okay.
Hmm, okay.
Basically, it would utilize the existing exits that are there already.
Correct, correct. And since it belongs to Murphy's, Murphy's gas station is okay with them utilizing there.
I see what you did there.
Yeah.
Okay. Interesting. Does anybody else have any questions?
Let's make a motion to approve, uh, item 10, which is case, case V 2025 dash 0002.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Ridden. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson. Can we put up the vote, please? Thank you. Who knew? Plasma, okay, anyways. All right, we are going to move on to item 11. Uh, consider and act upon the award of RFP 2025 dash 001, operation and maintenance of the Family Fun Center to the End of the Mountain Gods. Um, do you have anything you want to add?
I don't have anything.
I can't hear you.
I don't have anything I have to add other than everything I've already said. I will stand for questions. Staff recommends approval.
Does anybody have any questions?
I just, I got one. I currently have a contract with a large general contractor that has a contract with Mescalero. Um, I just want to make sure if anybody has a problem with me voting on it, I'll abstain.
Is that like a cousin three times removed?
No, I mean, it's just, I'm a sub of a general that, that we're building a project up there and it's, since it's the same entity, I just wanted to disclose it. Um, it's not a direct conflict, but it could be conceived as an indirect, so if anyone has a problem with me voting, just let me know.
I don't have an issue with it, I think.
I'll abstain, so.
I think if you were a tie vote, it might be an issue, but I feel like you're not going to be, so, it's all good.
Uh, this, this is an awesome proposal. I think this will be a great thing for Alamogordo. It'll be a good partnership.
I agree. All right, with that, do I have a motion to approve item 11?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Robinson. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Guthrie. Can we put up the vote, please? And motion passes seven zero. Congratulations. Well, I don't know about you guys, but I am super excited that I can say we have a management company for the Family Fun Center. That's like worth another applause, I'm sorry. That building, I promise you, it's going to be the death of me, but not anymore. Now it's your problem. All right. I know I'm full of jokes tonight, right? You have to inject humor when you're a politician, so, okay.
Hey, Susan, before we get to this, can I make a comment real quick?
Sure, of course.
So, I just want to inform everybody, uh, me and my wife finally have gotten our foundation started. Not, let me rephrase that. Not me and my wife, my wife and my sister-in-law finally have gotten a foundation started. Uh, for that, you know, for the people that don't know, we lost our daughter last year due to epilepsy. So, I just want to encourage anybody that has, somebody that has epilepsy, to please reach out. We, we do help people with, uh, children. We are able to finally help a family in Colorado this past week, uh, buying a stroller for them. It's an $1,800 stroller. And, uh, so, I just wanted to give a shout-out to my wife and my sister-in-law and say thank you. And then, thank you for the city and everybody in Alamogordo that has helped us through this time, especially Mary Ann. this time, especially Mary Ann. My daughter loved working for you guys, so, just so you know, all her money is still in her bank account because she never spent anything, so, but thank you.
Well, that's awesome. Thank you for sharing that. And just know that, I can just tell you for myself, we continue to pray for you and especially for Monica.
Appreciate it.
I can't even, I can't even imagine. I did lose a cousin to epilepsy. He was older, so, and I know it just, it crushed my aunt. She was just never the same after that. And so, but for the grace of God, we keep moving on, so.
Thank you.
Just know we're praying for you. Thank you for that. All right, with that, we're going to move on to item 12, appointments to boards and committees. Am I ready for that? Of course I am. Okay. All right, we have got two applications to the Alamogordo Public Library Board that were received. There is one vacancy. I did table this previously, but we've brought it back. And I had, I had a decision here. Can you give me just one second? I'm sorry, I actually had, I thought I could remember this and I can't. Yeah, yeah, okay, I just want to make sure I got the right one. Based on actually a recommendation, I'm going to go ahead and appoint Billy Childs, Billy Don Childs, I don't know if he uses his full name, to that board. If nobody has any objections? No? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and do that. And then, what's this one? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm trying to. I'm confused because I thought I only had two applications, but I see a third one and I'm trying to figure out if that's something different.
So it's two to the library board and then one to the SVP council.
Why don't I see that? Is it the senior volunteer program?
Yes.
Okay. And that's Rebecca Miller?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought that was part of the library board, so I do have one application for the senior volunteer council, Rebecca Miller. I'm going to go ahead, just full disclosure, I do know her personally, but I had no idea she applied for this and I don't see people pounding down our doors for that. So I'm going to go ahead and appoint her if nobody has an issue with that. Okay? And with that, we're going to move on to item 13, adjourn into executive closed session to discuss limited personnel matters, the city manager. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald, a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Robinson. Can we put up the vote?
I closed out early.
This is very routine for Commissioner Burnett.
What is your vote, Commissioner Burnett? Why isn't it working?
I closed out already too, so I'm an I.
I think I just voted twice, so.
I voted already, but it didn't come up, so.
Yeah, it was weird.
Seems to have frozen, but it's seven zero.
Okay. All right, motion passes seven zero. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Which room we're going to? I'll back.
Going to leave it alone.
I'm going down.
Of course. All right, well, I said, oh, what? Oh, right. Oops.